You know, if you really have, if you have like a concern about it personally, you can always reach out to the state. The state has some great resources on that. When in doubt, you know, always disclose. There's no really harm in disclosing.
Right.
The, the, the standard is actually, in my opinion, relatively high. Like you said, like a financial gain where someone, you know, a family member, financial gain.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so the standard's relatively high. So it's more of a personal thing. If you don't feel like, let's say there's no game, but you don't feel that you can genuinely give a, an opinion that's, you know, based, not based on the facts, like if there's, is something it's like pulling you in our direction. It's, it's always just better.
Yeah. And that's, that was sort of my advice is you can, you could either go to our legal counsel and say, hey, this is my concern, or I agree with you. The state has pretty good ethics guidelines. You can just call the office and say, this is the deal. And, and they, they can, they can guide you. So.
Yeah. I used that for the Park Central, the, the State Ethics Commission. Very helpful.
Honestly, I just think my house is a little bit too far away. I mean, I mean, it's in that neighborhood. I just, okay. Way it said that, so I'm, I'm.
South Borough, so we're all. Yeah. South Borough is all, you know, relatively in the neighborhood.
Relative.
Now Craig lives up the street from me. Is that a, you know?
I don't, no, no, I just, Paul's a bit adjacent across the street towards overlook. You know, so I'm not concerned about it.
Okay.
Around the corner up the street, but I didn't think Paul was any closer to that.
All right. Um, I'm just looking for, okay. Here's, I think.
So Paul's not joining us in general tonight?
No, he's not.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Laura, how are we doing?
I think we're good. The first applicant is here, so.
Okay.
Um, YouTube is giving me trouble again, but we should be fine.
Okay. All right. Okay. Uh, then I'm going to call the, uh, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three South Borough Zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. Uh, those wishing to watch or participate remotely can do so by accessing the meeting link at www.southbourotetown.com/remotemeetings. So.
That's the wrong one. Sorry.
It is?
It changed.
Ah.
It changed today.
Yes. Oh, the, the, the website.
The website. Yeah, sorry.
You're right. It, it did. Uh, okay.
Do you need the new one?
Let me look. I thought I could find it quickly. So. All right. It's, yeah, all right. It's at.
Oh, wow. That's a.
And it looks to me like you can find some links. I, I like the look of that, that home. Looks like there, there's links you can find right on the homepage. You don't necessarily have to dig uh, into the specific um, zone. Is that, that, is that a little bit more accurate, Laura?
Yeah. I mean, I, I have the, the address if you want that, just to be super specific.
Yeah, I.
Go ahead.
I think, I think we're okay. Um. Okay. Uh, the first item we have on our agenda this evening is, uh, eight Winter Street, Jeffrey Cholman. So if you could, Laura, do you want to read the, uh? Or.
You got it.
Yeah.
Um. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing via virtual Zoom meeting Wednesday, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, seven o'clock PM with regards to the petitions of Jeffrey Cholman, eight Winter Street, Southborough, Mass., map thirty-eight, lot thirty-one. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow an alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The property is located in the residential B district and relief is requested under section one seventy-four dash nine E. And Jeff, I see you. I'm moving you over. Just give me one second. Jeff, are you there?
Good evening.
Hello.
Evening, Jeff.
Hello.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Cholman. Um, I, I, I apologize if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly. Um, so we, we did see the application. I would say we probably understand it pretty clearly. Is there something you'd like to present or anything you'd like to share with us regarding your, your, uh, your project and your, your need for the application?
Well, just to make sure that everybody is on the same page, uh, the project is for a very small deck to be added to the front of my house. The uh, setback actually goes through the middle of my house. So, but the deck is so small that it's only going to be adding about two and a half feet to uh, of additional incursion into the setback. Uh, the main reason I'm asking for uh, to be able to build the deck is that my mobility is not as good as it was when I was a much younger man and going up and down the cement steps on the front of my house. Uh, I'm not comfortable. And so I don't use my front door and I would like to be able to. Adding the deck will uh, create a situation where I can easily get in and out of the front door. And it also, as an added benefit, will allow me to enjoy the view across the street of the reservoir that is there. So uh, quite frankly, it, it will be a tremendous improvement to my quality of life.
And um, I've just, just, I'm sure the board saw, but I think there are three letters you have from neighbors in support of the project.
Correct. Uh, James Colery uh, was kind enough to send in a letter. He and I have known each other for some time. Cause when I first moved into the house, I pulled a permit to have the electrical uh, service substantially increased. Uh, the other thing is I have on uh, one side, Tim Smith, and on the other side, Patty Fiori. These are my direct uh, you know, conjoined neighbors, if you will, or, or the neighbors whose property directly touches mine. Uh, so they're on either side of me. I don't actually have a neighbor that is across the street from me. So basically I got letters from uh, the two people that are going to be most impacted, if there's any impact at all.
Correct. Right. You're all, your direct butters are, are, are in support.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Um, I just, one small piece of uh, of business here. I, I, I needed to say, Jamie, I'm going to ask you to step into B, to sit on this floor because Paul is not in attendance tonight. Um, okay, so um, again, I, like I said, I, I think people understand uh, what you're asking for pretty well. Um, but I, I will ask them to, to, if they have any questions, I'm going to start with Doris. Do you have any questions for Mr. Cholman?
Uh, uh, good evening, John. Uh, no, you know, David, I, I do not have any questions on, on this application. Um, it, it's written well. Uh, the visuals are clear um, that this stairwell with no railing exists as it does today. Uh, it comes in line with the application. Um, you know, without the physicality that, that um, it looks to be in need of repair. And the improvement, I'm just going to improve the look of the neigh, of the neighborhood with Noah Butters objecting to it. So uh, I, I do not have any additional questions. Maybe some of the other members do.
Thank you. Um, Mike, anything from you?
No, I don't have any questions. Uh, the application was well put together. Uh, the, the plans and the design all um, are clear to me. Um, have the letters from some of the butters. So I don't have any questions for the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Craig, did you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Jamie, anything, any questions from you?
No questions. I, I, it seems all makes sense to me and will be actually an improvement. Um, that seems like our applicant and all his butters want. So no issues on my end.
Great, great. Um, yeah, and that, I'm familiar with the, the neighborhood. Uh, we frequently sort of drive through there as a way to get from central down to Route nine. So I've been, I, I see, I've been by the, the property and I, um, you know, I would agree, having something there for the view across the street of the, of the reservoir would be a good thing. Where you have a house that's already not compliant, you're basically doing something that's only a slightly making that, that compliance worse, uh, which I think is relatively minor. And it, it would appear your butters all agree and are in support. And I don't think there was any, anything noted. No, there was no emails that we received in opposition to this proposed change. So it seemed fine with me.
David, uh, one thing I'd like to note is, once I get the deck installed, I will relandscaped the front of the house so that it will further improve the aesthetics of it. It's just basically, I had some trees that were getting uh, entirely overgrown for the house. And so I had them just removed. Then I found out slowly that, you know, what was really involved with actually putting a deck on the front. So it's taken me a couple of years to actually uh, deal with that. Uh, the other thing that I would like to mention that I forgot to say earlier is that if there were a event where I had a fire in the house, uh, that is one of the primary exit points to get out of the house because the stairwell that goes upstairs is very close to that front door. So I would like to be in a position where I can use the front door as a fire exit. Whereas right now, quite frankly, uh, I would be very concerned about going up and down the cement steps.
That makes sense.
Yep, that makes sense to me. Um, thank you for that. Laura, is there anybody else in the audience that wants to make any sort of a public comment or question?
Keep doing that. Um, no, there are no hands raised.
Okay. All right. Um, all right. If there's nobody else from the public that, that has, that wants to speak, uh, I think we've answered all questions. Yes, Craig?
I moved to close the public hearing.
Second that.
Okay. Motion to move the closing, uh, the public hearing with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Okay, the, the public part of the meeting is now closed. Uh, based on what we've discussed so far, I don't think we have a lot more to talk about here. We seem to be in agreement. So uh, I'll take a motion on the, uh, on the application.
I move to approve the application for a special permit for uh, sorry, the address again is what? Ten Winter Street?
Eight.
Eight, Winter Street, sorry. Move to approve the uh, special permit for eight Winter Street.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposition, nay. Doris?
Aye.
Uh, Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Okay, very good. Congratulations. Five to zero. Your application is approved.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Look forward to seeing it done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been dreaming about this for ten years. So I, you cannot believe how much I am looking forward to this.
Well, that's what we're known for, is making dreams come true.
I never thought that.
Well.
That's why they pay us the big bucks.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Zoning Board, Dreamers.
No, Disney and South Borough Zoning Board.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess that that means I should leave. So uh, to all of you, a good evening and once again, thank you very much.
Good evening to you, Mr. Cholman. Have a good evening. Okay. Uh, the next item we have on our agenda is uh, it's scheduled, mm, seven fourteen. Uh, clerk, do you think we have enough U A to go into the seven fifteen one or do we officially wait another minute? To the clerk, it's still your goal.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were, I'm sorry. I know, we should, we, we actually have to wait until seven fifteen.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so.
That's fine.
Um, you know, we can, we can count down the, the last thirty seconds. I'm not going to suggest that we take a break.
Oh, I, one would hope not. Yeah, yeah, we, we should, we should abide by the rules. You said we're gonna do it at seven fifteen, do it at seven fifteen. Which by my watch.
Yeah.
I have now, yes. So we're good to go. Uh, so uh, you, this is for sixteenth East Main Street, Mike Hartnett on behalf of NSVPI Realty Incorporated, special permit. And Laura, let you read the notice.
Sure. The morning, oh, my goodness, I can't talk today. I apologize. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing via virtual Zoom meeting Wednesday, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven fifteen PM with regard to the petitions of Mike Hartnett on behalf of NSVPI Realty Inc., sixteen East Main Street, Southborough, Mass., map fifty-five, lots fourteen and fourteen A. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow a use as a private school, preschool, on a non-conforming lot. The property is located in the residential B district. Relief is requested under section one seventy-four dash eight point three B, section one seventy-four dash eight point two B four, and section one seventy-four dash eight point three D.
Very good. Thank you. And do we have someone?
We do. We have. Hold on. Just let them load in.
Can you hear us? Yeah. Good evening. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not very consistent about this, but if you could just first identify yourselves before we, we go ahead.
William, my name is Michael Hartnett, uh, twenty General Henry Knox Road, Southborough, Mass.
Gretchen Hartnett, twenty General Henry Knox Road, Southborough, Mass.
I'm Laura Eppen, one Overlook Drive, Southborough, Mass.
And I'm Ron Eppen, one Overlook Drive, Southborough, Mass. Uh, together, we are all the owners of the Southborough Village Preschool.
And, and.
And good, thank you. Okay. Um, do you have materials to present tonight or are you just going to go into a discussion?
Um, if, if it's okay, we'd just like to walk through a few things and.
Sure.
Couple photos. So just to kind of give you a little background, um, we purchased the property back in October. We have owned the property immediately adjacent to it, which is the Southborough Village Preschool for the last twelve years.
Yeah, since twenty eleven.
Um, only operating as preschool. Laura and Gretchen are the directors of the preschool. They run the day-to-day operations. Uh, the property next door came up for sale unexpectedly. Um, and we were given a chance to buy it, which we did. Along the same period of time, what we're experiencing here at the preschool is an increase in families trying to get their younger preschoolers into the program that we do not have room for. Um, during COVID, during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, um, mandatory closures and restrictions on capacity. A lot of the private preschools closed down in the area and a lot of the in-home daycare type things closed down. So there's now a need in the area for additional, additional spaces for the younger preschool kids, really toddler age. So what we're hoping to do is open up the first floor of the building on number sixteen um, as an additional classroom. It would be one classroom only, um, a maximum of nine children at any one time and two teachers. Little bit about the building is the, um, we did have an architect go through to give us an idea. Um, there's a set of permit plans, returning a package. The architect's plans, um, and speaking with, um, the town, the setup would be that the first floor would be modified a bit on the interior. Um, the second floor would be closed off. Um, so a wall would go up with a lock, where the second floor would have no use at all, um, during its time period. Again, one classroom, nine kids max, any one time. Um, and again, the reason for mainly is that um, it was kind of a, an unexpected surprise that the property came up and it happened at the same time that there's this need and there's a lot of families really knocking on our door looking for younger preschool spaces. The, the proposed hours of operation here, um, for the school in general, and again, this is um, the one classroom that would be in number sixteen would be in addition to the operation that exists currently, um, here in the existing preschool. The hours of operation are basically eight forty-five AM to three thirty PM. One of the things, just to kind of go back a little bit on the history of um, business here and where we are is that this business has been here since nineteen sixty, um, through a few different hands. It was previously known as the Walcott School. So anybody that's been in town for a while may have attended at that point, or maybe even attended Southborough Village. But again, I think about sixty-three years it's been a preschool here, the existing building, um, built as a preschool back in nineteen sixty. Kind of going through, um, just a little bit about how we interact with the town of Southborough. Uh, again, we're all Southborough residents. We've all been Southborough residents for more than twenty-two, twenty-three years or more. Our kids all went to school here at the Southborough Village Preschool. Um, our kids all went to the public school system. Um, you know, we're, we're future lifers here in Southborough. Um, we're, we're very tied to the neighborhood and we just want to do, um, try to do things the right way. Uh, we are unfortunately on a little bit of a time crunch with this particular project. We have families on a waiting list, hoping that they can get into a space for September, if things work out well, um, which we're hoping. And we do understand that the next step on this is the site plan, which is in the works now, but our engineer was waiting for the, basically to make sure we got through this step before he put the.
Okay.
And she touches on it. Um, in case anything popped up that he needed to address. So just to give a little bit of background about who we do serve, um, like I said, Laura and Gretchen have been operating the school for about twelve years now. Um, each year we have upwards of ninety-four children in the existing program. Um, and we've looked at the records and about, you know, about eighty-five families on average, and about ninety percent of those kids and families are Southborough residents here, after here. So we're servicing a good population of the town of Southborough. Um, there's currently twelve teachers here. Um, ten of those teachers are Southborough residents. The other two, um, have ties to Southborough. They're, they were tied to the preschool at some point. Um, basically, everybody that has come here to work here, um, has had a tie to the preschool and that's how they've gotten involved with it. So we are. So if I could, I just kind of want to show a couple of pictures. I show you a photo of the, um, the existing house, um, from the front and rear. And just to kind of touch base, I don't know, Laura, if I can screen share here.
All right. You should be able to.
Well, it says that the host has disabled it, so.
Let's see. Can you screen share or no? Is that not letting you?
Yeah, it's not letting me screen share.
Who's the host?
I am. Give me one second.
Okay, I just got it. Okay, there we go. So in front of the property, just to give you a feel, if you're not familiar with it, um, can you see this on your screen now? Are you guys able to see the? Yeah, I'm sorry, Laura, am I doing something wrong here?
We do have the photos from the.
You.
I don't know.
Do you have any, any?
Unless, unless there's something.
No, um, if, if you have the photos in the application, that's fine. Um, so kind of what we wanted to just show is that when you look at the property from the front, um, you can see the property is it's a little bit on the older side. There are features to it that haven't been maintained.
Right.
You have some photos from the back. There was some damage to the back of the property. Um, it, it needs an upgrade. Um, part of what we're doing is part of this whole process. We have a contractor on board, the architect's plans that you have in hand. Kind of detailed the work we're going to do, which is we start off with, um, we've already put a new roof on because it needed it. Um, the next few steps will be reciting the building, uh, putting new windows in, uh, mainly on the first floor. Upgrading the exterior, the, the strut, the, the architectural part of the building stays the same. Like, we're not, we're not adding anything to the building. Uh, we're not changing anything on the exterior of the building in, in any noticeable way. We do have to add an A D, get ADA accessible ramp. Um, that's really the one addition, see it on the architect's plans. One of the things we do with the, with the ramp is instead of having it come to the front door and have it look like a business, um, with a ramp out front, the ramp is going to actually come off the back door. And if you look on the architect's plans, the elevation of it, you'll notice that it, um, it comes across the back of the property and then we're having it go down between the two properties, between the existing preschool and this building. Uh, kind of maintains the look of the front of the property as residential property, uh, moving forward. The, the property itself, we're not proposing any signs. Uh, we're not proposing any lighting other than what you would normally have on a regular residential property because, um, there's nobody here when it's dark. Uh, the children, whether it's daylight savings time or not, the children don't come until the sun is up and they're gone before the sun goes down. And the operations are closed. And that way, basically, the property will maintain a residential look to it. What else we have here?
Stagger.
Oh, yeah. So I, I know that probably the biggest issue for the neighborhood, maybe for the town, is, uh, traffic and parking. So, uh, what we've done this past year on the existing business is we've staggered the drop-offs and the pickups. That way, we can get more of the teacher cars off the road. Um, you know, I, I came through today just to see what it looked like and by nine AM, there were no cars. Um, drop-off, drop-off, drop-off is pretty much done by nine AM. So um, it's, it's a better condition now. I'm not sure if the neighbors have noticed. Um, but we do have, there's a parking lot at the existing building. Um, the new building has a driveway and as part of the site plan will incorporate whatever we need for parking. Um, it's my understanding from talking to the planner that our requirement is two parking spaces. So, um, I think we can probably manage that pretty easily on the site. Parents do drop off in front of the schools. Um, one of the things that's a little bit different now that we own the property is the curb line that runs between the two properties now is all in front of our, our properties. So, um, in the past, where parents were basically dropping off in front of somebody else's residence, now they drop off in front of properties owned by the preschool. They're still dropping off. Um, again, it's not in front of another residence and it gives us a much longer curb line in front of the school that we can do without really impacting the private residences. There is room when the cars are parked against the curb. It's, you know, there is parking allowed. Uh, two-way traffic still gets by. Uh, it's a safe setup for the kids. The kids can get right out at the curb line and get on the sidewalk if the car doesn't happen to pull into the driveway of the parking lot. It's been sixty-plus years of a number of drop-offs and pickups every day. Uh, we haven't had any safety issues or any problems with that. Uh, we have teachers out there to make sure things run smoothly. So, um, I do understand for the neighborhood, it's a concern. Um, adding these nine additional spaces, um, should not change any of that. It shouldn't really add to any volume at any one time because those drop-offs will be, they'll be scheduled earlier. So we stagger the drop-off so those nine children will get dropped off fifteen minutes earlier than the next drop-off period starts. And the drop-off is probably less than five minutes per car. Um, in terms of the property, we're not really planning on changing much about it, just cleaning it up. Uh, we're not changing the grade. Um, we're not really planning on changing the landscape much. There is a big row of denderon out front that has to come down probably because of the ramp. Um, and then the only other thing would be, um, if we had some nuisance trees, there's a few that physically touched the building um, that we'd like to trim back and there's a couple that touched the garage that we'd like to trim back.
There are a couple of.
Yeah, I see that.
Couple of densers in the back. But yeah, the parking and the traffic I know was probably the biggest concern. And yeah, again, just to repeat, I know we're talking to planning, we're required to have two spots. We have more parking in two spots. We've been using the existing driveway to teach us for a while. And like I said, coming through today, there were, there was nobody parked on the street. Yeah, again, I don't want to tie you guys up too long, but basically as we went through the number of items in the. The zoning regulations really, you know, kind of explaining to the parking and the traffic seemed to be the biggest. Thing that we figured the neighborhood might be concerned about.
Yeah, I would agree. That's that's most likely the thing that people want, would want to ask questions about. Okay, so yeah, that that's, I think you're right about that.
Did you hear? Concerns.
I'm I'm just, I I'll just raise, there was one email that I'm aware of, unless I missed another one. Where I think the 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 comment was they're good neighbors, but. What they were asking about is there's apparently been times where there've been cleaners there as late as eleven thirty PM, so. I don't, they didn't, nobody that that I know of raised an issue with the parking, but they just said. Hey, if we're gonna have somebody there, can you not have them there late at night?
Yeah, so I if I can address that, we have a professional cleaner come in every day. And that's always been the case at the preschool for, you know, even when our kids were here as children. Typically, they're here right at the end of the school day. The entire place gets cleaned every single day. But yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if on occasion if she has a scheduling issue, she might come a little bit later, but that's not her schedule.
I would actually be a little bit surprised. She's always here. I'm here late every day and she comes in the afternoon with me. Perhaps, I mean, there's a chance on the weekend, but she has children herself, so we do on occasion. A staff meeting sometimes in the evening, but that's, I I don't, I honestly don't know what that could have been, but.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, and and you know, I I think probably if there are people in attendance, we would listen to whatever their. Their concerns might be, like I said, th- this is as much as we know. Carpet cleaners arrive at eleven thirty PM and a school might make a racket, so. The number of times it happened, I have no idea. That's the context that we have.
That actually helps me to understand. We have a gentleman in the summer that refinishes all of the classroom floors. And works a full-time job and fits us in in the evening. It's probably true that he's probably done that. That explains that.
Okay, okay.
I think that falls under our our general new noise bylaw. It's like, I I think there's been some changes on the bylaw regarding late work. That's a noise of, you know, audible. Yes, I don't.
We can make sure that doesn't happen. That's not a problem.
Okay. Yeah, that's, Laura, I'm I'm, there wasn't anything outside the nest. I think that was the only thing we had, correct?
Think so.
Yeah, okay. Well.
Looks like somebody has their hand raised.
Yeah, do we have anybody who wants to speak or some, okay?
Yeah. Oh, we've got three.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect. Hi, my name is Adam Dalton and my parents live at eighteen East Main Street, which is. Just behind this property. My family's been living in town since nineteen forty-eight. In fact, I think my grandfather bought that property with the GI bill. And they've actually had an easement to use that lane. That is adjacent or or right next to their park or their driveway. And I guess my concern is how would this. Parking lot impact their ability to get in in and out of their driveway unimpeded, because that's currently the only way that they can get in and out of their property.
Mike, can you address that?
I'm pulling this up right now. Hold on a second.
Actually, I met the.
The petitioner, sorry.
My my partners here may have more comment, but in general terms, the right of way that runs up is. Not something we have any immediate plans for. We're still kind of working through the details on it. We don't have any plans at this point to access the back of the property. As you look at the plot plan. The plot plan property here that you guys have, you'll notice it's actually two separate lots. The town of Southboro still has a list as two separate lots. At at some point in the future, we may look into using the right of way, but at this point, we just don't have any. Any plans for.
And and nothing that we have planned would. Would alter the ability of that current butters to that right of way and the people who depend on it for access to their properties. Nothing that we would do would impact their ability to use that right of way as they're using it currently. We we don't have a legal right to.
Yeah, they all have needed, the the two houses that come off of that right of way have needed access as easements. Just like the utilities from the town, those and the other utility companies, those are all in the in the deed for that particular parcel, not for. Right away parcel.
The the previous owners of sixteen East Main Street. Did not have deeded access to that right of way. They did, however, claim a periodic right to use that right of way to access the rear of their property. When coming off of East Main Street, if you want to get a vehicle to the rear of the property, say to do, you know, landscaping work or something like that. You have to use that, that right of way is the only way to get a vehicle back there. So, you know, they claim the right to do that. But it is not, is not something that they have deeded access for. Our our current plans with the property are to put the parking up front. And I I think the. The right of way would perhaps get periodically used by somebody who wanted to come in and access the rear of the property, but. No blockage, no. No interference with any of butters right to use it.
Yeah, we don't, we don't actually own it, so we wouldn't do anything to the physical structure right away.
Yeah. Sure.
So Mike Robbins does an easement that not, that doesn't that mean they're. They're they're entitled to access that way, correct?
Well, so not knowing the historical ownership or the use of the right of way, I'm looking at it online right now, so. That right, whether it's deeded or not, is likely at the very least what's called an easement by prescription. And what that means is, let's say that's the primary means of egress to and from the right of way. To the to East Main, then. The petitioners can't do anything that would obstruct, interfere, or impede. Either ingress or egress to those lots. That being said, I have an overall question, who has been maintaining that right of way, question mark?
And and we don't know, we're assuming it's one of the homeowners.
Primarily eighteen East Main Street and our neighbors at sixteen, the previous residents, we were the. Basically, the only ones that kept up that lane and. Yeah, it it's actually getting, it's getting more and more expensive to do so over time, just because we're we're the only ones that really do it.
Okay, yeah, I totally get that. What I recommend just. Is you want to, because you can see I'm using, you know, Google Earth imaging. So there's some overhang already, some of the brushwork. That should probably be 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 trimmed as as part of your overall access and maintenance. Because you just don't want to let that deteriorate, but I don't think. Just for the sake of this conversation, without reading any of the legal rights therein within the title. I think that right of way exists and could not be impeded by the petition.
Does that address your concerns, Mr. Dalton?
Uh, yeah, some of them, I mean. I'm not a real estate lawyer, but I'm just trying to figure out what's going on, because this is the first time I've heard.
No, no, it's a really important question, because that's.
It is.
The property, and so I'm really glad that you're here. I really think that it's it's someone that wants, you know, I think from a design perspective for the petitioners, you just want to be very thoughtful. About making sure you're not abridging any of those.
Right.
Egress in or in or out.
Okay.
I don't, I can try to pull up the title as we go through, but it might take me a little bit of time.
Well, but I I I guess my take on that would be, I don't know that that is necessarily something that needs to be stayed as a.
I don't think so either. I don't think that's necessarily germane. I was more trying to address the question at hand.
Yeah, no, I I agree. I think we should try to address that concern to the best of our ability.
Exactly right.
Just the the fact if if an easement does exist, it's by right, you you, as you said very well, Mike. You know, they wouldn't have the right to 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 block it or to prevent egress or ingress.
And I don't see anything on the plans that seems, I think that question, and I think the question is a good one, because. With respect to the ramp that's being built in the back of the house. What makes sense from a parking access to that ramp? Are they gonna use that right of way to access that round, open-ended, question mark? But to me, that's that's a reasonable concern.
Right.
I could address this. When you look at the architect's plans, it might not be perfectly clear, but. The access to the ramp is up the front walkway from from the sidewalk on East Main Street towards the front door. And then there will be a, once you get to the front porch, there will be a walkway that goes west.
Okay.
Around the around this, around the side of the house between.
Okay, I'm looking at it a little. I looked at that. I see what you're saying now.
Between the preschool and the house.
Away from.
Yeah.
We we have no plans to touch the right of way in any way, shape, or form, but we're happy to talk to all the neighbors there and make sure that we can come to.
Okay, the way I was looking at the plans, I was actually kind of. Looking at the ramp a little bit different. I see what you're saying as far as the design now. Think. Think I got it.
Yeah. I think so. I think they, I think they've explained it pretty clearly, so.
Yeah, I got it now.
Okay.
Mike, just a general question. So if a car. Would to block the right of way to the back side of Hillside. That can't be done. They can't block.
No, that'd be a serious issue, just think.
Yeah, so because that that's.
Yeah, just, yeah, that that's always the concern for fire, ambulance. And that's where I mentioned, if you can imagine a ladder truck, if you go to, if if you Google Earth, the the property. You can really see some of the overhang and there'd be a potential issue for, you know, a large ladder truck.
Yeah, so that's. And maybe just. And what Mr. Dalton, I think maybe.
When I drove by the property yesterday, I didn't even notice.
That it existed.
Right of way. I literally drove right there. I didn't.
It's hard to see.
Yeah, you know, the good news is, I think, those who are familiar with the neigh- the neighborhood know that it's there. It used to actually go all the way up continuously up to Hillside Avenue.
Got it.
And some folks have moved along and and other obstructions over the back end of it, but I I I don't think anyone cares. But the the front end of the 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 front end of that right of way. That is, I don't know how long it's been there, but yeah, but everyone in the neighborhood knows about it. And to our knowledge, it has not been an issue of people actually parking cars and blocking it, like it's.
Okay.
I want to just make sure I address. Question more than anything.
Looks like a driveway when.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was. I just thought it was a driveway to a house. I I just didn't. Didn't stop to.
We remind our parents all the time, we have monthly emails. We are outside when people are parking. We remind them, you know, not to park in front of mailboxes and to be mindful of the neighbors' driveways. So it is part of what we do here, and that certainly. That easement hasn't seemed to have been an issue, but we, you know, continue to. Make that clear to the families, the.
And and as the construction takes place, right, of the ramp and. I want to make sure there's no construction trucks blocking them, or at least have someone there to move, to move them if necessary.
Our contractor is aware, he's gonna, he'll park his equipment in his dumpster when the time does come in the in the existing driveway. And the ramp, the ramp is being constructed on the opposite side of the building from the right of way.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Will the same contractor that we use to repair the roof. And they were able to get their crew, and they were able to get their crew in and out pretty efficiently, and we're respectful. Of the neighborhood when they brought their trucks in, so we have confidence that they'll do the same with this project.
Yep, will you participate in the upkeep of that access road?
We don't own it. We talked to the neighbors and figure out what it is. There's still some questions about it. It is owned by another family in town. If you actually look at the deed. So I think.
Yeah, I'm looking, I I pulled up the deed, I'm pulling up the the right of way. I think that what might make sense for everyone involved, and again, I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole on this. But I do think from an engineering perspective is to clearly identify, you know, if you if you're there to clearly. I measure out that forty foot, forty foot wide right away, because. Seeing as it's so overgrown, you might not necessarily know where one. Piece of that forty-foot puzzle begins and ends, if that makes any sense.
And if I could just kind of clarify what I was saying a second. The right of way doesn't play into the operation of the business.
Got it, loud and clear.
But as as a good neighbor, we 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 would like to be.
And 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 that, and what you mentioned about, you know, participation in maintenance of the of the right of way, the the right right of way. Could be useful to us at a future date, but we need to access the rear of the property, which is currently just woods. So, you know, that's certainly something that we would constructively engage in and discuss if 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 asked.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, I would agree, since it's not. Part of the property, I mean, I think this is useful discussion.
Yeah, I don't think it's germane.
No, but I just wanted to get back to Mr. Dalton and ask if 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 this, the answers, the responses here. Have addressed the the concerns that he's raised this evening.
They've addressed some of them. I don't have the deed in front of me. My parents actually are are trying to log on as we speak. They just.
I got it.
Having issues getting on in Southboro.
Don't worry, I'm I'm looking at the actual grant of right of way from Joseph Tyler. Back in sixty-two, I want to say. So I've got the right of way. I'm looking at those sixty-one. I'm looking at those documents now to see if there's anything out of the ordinary. I'm seeing their current deed. There's nothing that, there there's nothing other than the 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 recorded right that I'm seeing that's jumping off my pages.
I don't have any more questions other than that.
Okay, well, well, thank you. I I if I, what I want to suggest is, Mike, I don't know if to say anymore. You want to look at that, but if there's somebody else, if there's another. A butter that we should probably.
They have a follow-up question. Don't hesitate to reach out on this, just that it's a little bit outside the petitioner's request.
It is, it is, but I I think it's. I think we should, you know, try to 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 address whatever whatever gets raised to the best of our.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's two references to the right of way. It's for right of pass and repass on foot motor vehicles, so it's it's really, it's really. They used to draft things a lot better back in the old days. It's very broad, it's very clear. It's not very specific, which is what you want, so it's a pretty broad right of repass, so.
Okay.
I I think that right is really well laid out and and that's it. I think that's. They have any questions, they can feel free to.
Yeah, but what what I would also suggest is, let's, if there's other people who want, wish to speak. Mr. Dalton, if if you end up logging on, finding something, you want to come back to raise something. Then you're welcome to do it, but I I think we should probably move on to.
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have another, any other?
Yeah, we do.
This is, hello?
Hello.
Oh, you can hear me. I haven't been able to speak. It's I've been hearing everything. I'm at eighteen East Main Street. I'm the owner of the property.
Sorry, could you just, what, your name first?
Oh, Melinda Dalton.
Okay, thank you.
So, um. My my concern, I'm very, I'm very pleased with the fact that you're gonna put the, you know, extend the preschool. I don't have any problems with that. I don't have any problems with that. The only issue I have is, um on some of the paperwork, it said something about potential to add some parking at the rear of sixteen East Main Street. Access by the right of way. So that would be, um, that would be an objection, of course, for me. Cuz I don't wanna impede any kind of traffic or getting in and out and, um there's a liability involved as well. And I I don't know if you have plans. It states this in one of the uh papers that I used, received, the attachments and stuff. Hello?
Yeah, no, we can we can hear you. Um, Mr. Hartnett, would you wanna address that?
That's that's actually, unfortunately, that's an error. Um, that was when the um when we're putting the paperwork together initially, um, and and the property, it was a need for um substantial parking. Um, so that that was not meant to go into the package because it doesn't look like we need that. Um, it looks like the parking up in the front, like I said, that from what we understand from planning, um, our minimum parking required for this is two spots, either two spots.
Right.
So the parking in the back is not something that we're looking at as part of this.
Oh, great.
Pulled out and slipped by us somewhere in the process.
Okay, yeah, that was my, that was my big concern and, um, Adam Dalton is my son. So he was able to speak before, but I wasn't, so that's why I bring this up now. Um so I think that as long as, you know, you you're saying that you're not gonna be using the right of way or the easement. That would, that satisfies me.
So I wanna, um, a little bit. Um, we are not planning on using the right of way to the easement for this project or for the um, the preschool as a as a business. We do claim a legal right, which the sellers told us they had to use that uh right of way to access the rear of our property as needed to maintain it. Um, and and it's not a deed right, it's a right that the previous owners claim they had over the we're we're certainly gonna continue to to. Not have laws.
Right.
Would not and will not for business purposes unless we had a unless we had clarified uh further and and gotten actual deeded rights to use that that right away for that purpose, and that is not our plan. That's not.
Yeah, and uh, yeah, so so we've lived here for seventy years. My father bought this land and built and all of that, and we've always used that right of way. Um, I don't have a problem with like, you know, the, like you mentioned before, the construction vehicles coming in and out. I just don't want it to be set that people are pulling in and driving and parking. So, I mean.
In the right of way?
Pardon me?
It you don't, you wanna make sure they're not pulling in and parking in the right of way. Is that what you're saying?
Well, pulling into the right of way and then having a parking lot back.
Okay, okay.
So, uh, yeah, I mean we really haven't had issues up until now. It and we have with the right of way, people speeding in and out and uh, but um, but that doesn't seem to be the case now, and it's our only entrance into our pre and exit, and the same for twenty East Main Street, the other house. And um, the owner of that house was gonna also be online tonight. Uh, but he was deployed, deployed to Kuwait, so he's not available, yeah. Um, so I'm satisfied as long as it's not gonna be used at all. That's fine.
Okay.
Except for construction vehicles or to mow the lawn, those guys would sometimes, you know.
Well, in all honesty, the the what what you're gonna see back there mostly is probably gonna be me. Uh, there there are a lot of dead trees uh back on the property line that are becoming a hazard, a fall hazard.
Right.
You're you're gonna see and hear me using that access road to get my SUV in and out of there to.
Yeah, I think you were there last weekend or something too, cutting cutting trees down. And one of the the trees from that is fell over on our land, so I know that they are a hazard. So I, yeah, that's that's no problem.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I think I'm, I think I'm uh, I'm done. I'm good.
Great, okay. Thank you, Ms. Dalton. We have somebody else, Laura?
Yep, we have one more.
I'm just on you.
Can you hear me?
Uh, we can now.
Great, um, thank you for um, uh, letting me speak. Uh, my name's Marty Paul. I live right across the street from the nursery school and we love the preschool. We really do. They're they're wonderful neighbors. Um, I love hearing the kids' voices when I'm home. Um, the only problem we have is with the traffic because it does really clog up East Main Street. Um, and it's not just once in the morning and once in the afternoon. It's four times a day because there's two sessions every day. Um, so with an expansion, I worry that it's not just nine more students. It's eighteen times two more pickups and drop-offs. Um, and it does cause a lot of traffic. Um, there have been times when I've come home from work and I can't get in my driveway because, you know, mom's like parked kind of blocking my driveway or dad, whatever. Um, so I was just hoping, I haven't seen the plans, but I was hoping that there was some way to sort of incorporate having the drop-off and pickups take place not on East Main Street. Um, because it is difficult for for cars to get by during these times that happen four times a day.
Okay. Um, all right, um uh, Mr. Hartnett, do you have any any response to?
So, um, it's, it actually works out to three times a day. The middle is the same time basically. Yeah, you, it does happen multiple times a day. Um, what we've done over the last year, um, there is a parking lot at the existing preschool, which holds about eight cars. And parents typically, there's typically six drop-off and pickups at once in that lot, the way they set it up. Um, one of the things in the past that has been an issue for that has been teachers with the teacher cars, but now we've been putting the teacher cars in the driveway over at number sixteen and that's made a huge difference um in terms of getting people in and out. Um, but what'll happen, so in the mornings and in the afternoon, when these drop-offs are done for this additional classroom, they won't be happening at the same time that the other drops off, drop-offs are happening. We're just gonna stagger the times so that those drop-offs start and finish before the next round of drop-offs happens, so um, it it won't be an additional number of cars at any one time. It'll just stretch the period out another ten or fifteen minutes. Um, and again, the the when we when we're in the regular preschool, you know, we're up with thirty-nine kids in the preschool. The the school next door on the classroom we're talking about is a total of nine kids at one time. So that particular block of time when those kids are dropped off and picked up will be a much noticeably less impact. Um, but we are limited for how much off-street parking we have, and we're limited for how much off-street parking we can get based on the geometry of the two properties.
And we are, unfortunately, it would be great to have access off of uh off of East Main Street. But um, there's, it's the only public right of way that goes in front of the school. Uh, there's that, and then there's the um the right of way cart road that we were that we were just discussing, and those are really the only two public rights of way that about the property.
Okay, I just maybe one point of clarity. How how much are you planning to do that? That staggering? You mentioned it a few times. So from the end time of one program to the start of the next program, what's the what's the planned gap there?
Yeah.
You gotta have a window. A drop-off window, yeah. We have a drop-off window, so the toddler class that's going to be in sixteen East Main Street will start at eight forty-five and parents can come and drop off, you know, from eight forty to nine, eight fifty. Usually it's very quick. They're usually all on time and then they go really fast. And then the other classes that start at nine, they have a window, you know, of ten.
Fifteen minutes to spread cars out, to spread drop-offs.
So a lot of parents also know that they do not like the traffic and the parking problems and they stagger their drop-offs too. So we have a lot of parents that are either early, on the early side or on the late side. And it seems that it, the parents have made it easier for the traffic flow themselves, so. You know, they they don't want their children going in, you know, during a very busy time during the day. Um, the only times that it is really hard, I've found, is when the town diverts the traffic um off of Framingham Road or Route thirty and they make it so that everybody has to go on to East Main Street, and that is a disaster for our school. But other than that, we've never had a problem with parents, um, you know, with drop-off. Or, you know, we, they, every, the parents try to be very respectful to anyone using the road. Um, and we do have a few people that drive by really fast on East Main Street. We've asked the police to put a school zone there, you know, signs there, and they refuse to having done that, so, um you know, we really, you know, we are respectful members of the community and we just want all the neighbors also to just educate all the children, and we would like everybody.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking to maybe put a little clarity around Ms. Paul's concern that if this you know, if you if you've got a gap between, you know, the end of one drop-off and a pickup, then it seems to me then you're you're giving yourself enough, you know, uh bandwidth there to make sure that you you're not you don't have cars stacking on top of each other.
That that's the plan, and and we acknowledge that uh, you know, we acknowledge that the be the because this is an old, uh, an older neighborhood and it's a and it's a residential street. There are some, you know, there are some, there are, there are, there are some limitations, but those limitations are ones that we've been working with for sixty-plus years, and we really do try to uh try to work with the neighbor neighbors to make sure that we're not unduly impacting um, uh, access to their their properties and and to come and go. Uh, we don't, you know, do we wish the road was bigger and that we had more space that we could put put people? Absolutely, but uh, we are, we are convinced that this plan, this modest expansion of a toddler program is not gonna exacerbate uh materially the current, the current situation. It it is what it is, and we're we're staggering it to make it as workable as possible, but uh, but um uh, you know, within within the physical constraints that we're working with, uh, we're confident that it is, it's not gonna make people's situations any worse.
And just go back to the initial question was, um, so basically it's a fifteen-minute staggering on um, the various age groups. So each age group has a start time, they can start to drop off, and then the time they have to be completely finished dropping off. And then the next age group starts, when the next age group starts, and they're fifteen-minute blocks. Um, if that doesn't work, we can look at stretching a few more minutes, try to.
Okay, but but I guess more what I was saying is, you're you're saying you've got a fifteen-minute window, right? But is there a gap between one fifteen-minute window and the next, or are they back to back?
They're currently back to back.
Okay.
We need to add a few minutes in, uh, we can certainly look at that.
That's intense.
Okay, um, so, uh, Ms. Paul, I don't know if any of these, uh, there are suggestions, uh, are there solutions here? Or help alleviate some of your concerns?
Well, um the noise factor seems to be extended by dropping, by by um staggering the drop-off. So it's it is, that does alleviate the traffic problem, but it doesn't reduce the noise factor of, you know, cars door slamming and people talking and laughing, which is, you know, that's part of living in a neighborhood. But if it goes on for several hours, three times a day, um, that's a bit of a problem. I mean, I was just hoping that the new plan would incorporate getting the traffic off of the street. Which would, you know, maybe with a driveway and a cul-de-sac, so parents could do a little, you know, drop-off and pickup, not on East Main Street. You know, but maybe utilizing the the two properties, cuz there's a lot of land, and that's what I was hoping. I was so excited um, to, you know, when I saw that they had bought that property, and I thought that this would be the perfect way to make it safer for everybody quieter for the neighborhood, but it doesn't seem like that's being incorporated. Um.
Yeah, we need, I think, I mean, I can't comment for the board, but that would be a whole different set of zoning variances that we'd need in order to do.
Love that as well.
We would love that.
Yeah, I would too. Yes. Uh yeah, I know, it's hard. It is really hard, and and you guys are are amazing neighbors, like you.
And we love you too. I mean, it's so that's why it's hard for us right now, so thank you.
Quick question, if I can, is it Martha?
Yes.
Do you think that the change in the addition is gonna be substantial? Uh, do you think it's gonna be a substantial detriment to you or any neighbors?
Well, unless the parking's changed, I think it might be. I, cuz I think that'll just spread the traffic along the street even farther than it already is. Because it is a res- this is a residential neighborhood and, um, you know, eighteen, you know, nine more children twice a day, that's that's thirty-two more drop-off and pickups, or whatever the math is, right?
It's, it would only be nine children once a day, um, with the drop-off and a pickup, so two. Um, it's not an afternoon class, it's just a morning class going in.
At at this point.
At this point, right.
Um, we can look at talking to, um, the parents that have signed up for the toddler class about starting fifteen minutes earlier. You know, they, when they registered or, well, they're they're not officially registered yet, but on the waitlist, and when we toured them, they were told it was an eight forty-five start, but that's certainly something we could look at and figure out how we can tweak things here and there to um, just make things run a little bit smoother.
I, we we do hear the doors opening and closing every time. I mean, we just hear it in our home cuz they're parked right in front of our house, so extending the drop-off and pickup time is paying for the street, but but it doesn't reduce the noise factor for our home. And I'm I'm assuming our other neighbors are have the same issue, cuz.
I'm misunderstood, sorry about that.
That's okay. No, it's it's kind of a two-fold thing, Gretchen. It's okay.
Alright.
Yeah, so what are your plans for the garage?
The garage on this property?
Yeah.
Um, so we'll get that'll get addressed as part of the um, the site plan. Uh, we need to have two parking spaces, and according to the planner, they both need to be um thirty feet off the road. Um, so talking to the planner, um if we can keep the garage and use that as one of our required parking spaces, we would, because it's indoor parking, if not, um, that would probably um, it would probably have to go if that was an um, an impact to the parking, but going up that side of the property, you can't access the back of the property because of the septic system and the tanks are right there at the back of the garage. So there's a limit for what you can do.
You couldn't, you couldn't expand the parking and just pave, you know, double the size of it, cuz then.
You have to do significant septic work in order to try to access the back.
Right, you're reading my mind. Yeah, exactly, so.
We we've, we've, we've looked at all the options for parking, and again, without um, without using the rear of the property through the right of way, which we've agreed we're not gonna do with it. We're we're limited. We're just geographically limited by the the constraints in both lots.
Are there any other, um, people wanting to speak on this or against questions?
Um Ms. Dalton has her hand up, but I'm not sure if it's leftover, so let me just check in with her. Ms. Dalton, did you have anything else that you wanted to discuss?
No, not really. I I was wondering about the garage and whether that would help give you a couple more parking places for the staff, you know, that garage area.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know I'm not, I don't know about zoning or any of that stuff.
I think one possibility might be, uh, you know, if we end up having to demolish that garage, you might be able to stack in a couple of cars sideways where it is, and you might ultimately fit one more car.
It would only buy, it would only buy you the same parking space that you lose by having somebody use the garage if somebody wanted to park inside it.
Exactly.
The septic being right behind it, um, it, there's, there's not enough room there between the right of way and the building. Uh, and then with the constraint of the septic right behind it, uh, the tanks and the pipes, you're limited to that. So again, um, when we do the the site plan, the planning board, um, that's one of the things that we have to figure out whether the garage stays or whether the garage goes and is just replaced with a parking spot.
Yeah.
Increase overall parking, and it doesn't become the type of parking that parents can get in and out. It would really just be a teacher's spot.
Right, right. Yeah, that's all I was thinking about, um, as long as.
Right, right. Yeah, uh, that's all I was thinking about, um, as long as the right of way is another whole issue and it's satisfied. So I'm I'm finished.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Should we, do we, do we have any other questions? Because as soon as we close it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, you're right, Craig. Sorry.
You're on mute, David.
I I do have a question. If the abutters are still on the. You're right, sorry. Um, yeah. Uh, are the abutters still on?
Um, some of them, yeah.
Are they for or against this project? Uh, I I hear that they're kind of in favor of it, but you know, worried about traffic. But overall, I'm not hearing strong objections, but I just want to make sure I'm hearing you, Brett.
Laura, you probably need to bring in um Martha and
Okay.
And Ms. Dalton.
Hang on, sorry.
Bringing in everyone.
Bring everybody.
So I'm I'm in, I'm in favor of the project with some revisions to the drop offs and pickups because I think it's just it's too loud and it's too dangerous to have it all done on East Main Street. So if there's any way to get it off the street, I would be thrilled.
And just so you know, the planning department has to kind of go through and review that and that's honestly, just I'm not trying to pass the buck, but that's, that's a little bit of a different, that's different than what we can provide. Especially here tonight for zoning relief for what's called a special permit to be able to add this addition. Uh, not that your concerns are meritorious, it's just don't have the capacity uh in our purview to address some of the concerns that you are raising.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Uh, Martha, um, so you, uh, this is um something I'm hearing. It's very, very concerning to me that uh, you have a safety issue uh with the overflow uh on Main Street, onto East Main Street. So if you could just be more clear, I, you know, we could all be in favor of it's a, it, we need the, we need the preschool, we need the addition to the preschool, but I gotta weigh that against um, is there a possibility between not just the noise, but there's the safety and security on the children, safety and security on the the residents in the town is, do you have any stronger feelings and sort of where Mike is? Um, I mean, if you could be not on the fence, as we say, that would be helpful here.
So what I, well, I mean, I can just say what I've observed when I come home from work is I get home, um, you know, oftentimes around the the second pickup time and um, you know, there are cars up and down East Main Street usually on the westbound side. Once in a while, there'll be a car trying to park on on I'm on the eastbound side of the road. Um, we've put some rocks up to kind of keep people from, you know, encroaching on our our front area because you used to, we used to end up with ruts and stuff like that. So um, so usually it's on the other side of the road, but you know, as as um the other person who spoke mentioned, sometimes people try faster than they should on East Main Street. And so that concerns me because you've got a lot of parents drop, you know, picking up kids, walking in the street with kids, and then you've got cars coming down. Um, I've had a hard time getting into my driveway sometimes. Um, but but it's the overall, it's very congested. If during the 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 pickup and drop off times, probably more so in the afternoons than the morning.
Uh, uh, particularly familiar with the in and out of the road and the doubling up and the tripling up and the mother's coffees. Um, and and the staggering is, so I I get to work, I can't get through. So um, but um, so in light of that, I I had a, is it Dalton's on? I have, and maybe, maybe it's a little bit directed to a mic question and it has to do with uh, although it's not exactly relative to the to meeting tonight, this right away, but the right away is going to exist uh, for use um, at some point in time, should there ever need to be. I I don't think you lose your right of way unless we had, we had the rights to put a condition in uh, to say, we say, you see where I'm going with this. So that parking lot could, is that, is that, is that something to be concerned about? The parking lot could go into that egress street?
For me, uh, this is Melinda Dalton. For me, it would be a a a big objection.
It affects the value of the property. You know, I know the name, I'm sorry, my name is John Dalton. I'm I'm um Melinda Dalton's husband. I just want to say, you know, I'm concerned because uh, twenty East Main Street, uh, the loving house residence. Um, they had um, the people who sold that house to them uh who previously lived there. Um, they had a a a situation where the people didn't want to buy. They lost sales just because of the egress, which is nobody's fault. It is what it is. But I'm concerned within the future, if more people are allowed access to that egress, is that going to push our the value of our property and the potential sale even further down the road. That's my concern.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the um, the right of way, I just want it to stay as it is and I don't want it to be used um on a consistent basis by anybody, you know.
That's just to, I'm not trying to cut y'all off. Um, that is not the petitioners, that's not what the petitioners have put forward.
Right, okay.
Have or don't have.
Okay.
That right of way. Uh, so I don't want to speak to anyone's what they can or can't do. Uh, I can tell you that the petitioner's plan does not involve that whatsoever.
Okay.
Great. Yeah, it was just in the, in the information that I had, so that's why I was even.
I only addressed it because it was, it was brought up again. That's the.
I totally understand.
Okay.
Um, thank you.
Okay.
So, um, so if the, if I could just hear just a little bit more about um, staggering hours, if if you had given it any further thought uh, to staggering hours more significantly, there are fifteen minute gaps, sort of where David is inquiring. Or you're just not ready. Not being ready is is okay too. You know, if you, because it's, we have abutters that are concerned.
What is is the question?
Wait, so you you start a quarter to to twelve and what if you started a quarter to eight? I know what you mean, to truly stagger, not not overlap. I mean, I just take the far end of it. Uh, maybe, maybe a good business plan, who knows? But you started a quarter to eight and then the other ones come in at eight fifteen. Something like this, the schools do something more significant where there wouldn't be overlap.
Well, we do have classes every fifteen minutes, come in every fifteen minutes. So it becomes a little bit difficult to spread them out much further than that because they are preschoolers. They can't come to school too late in the afternoon. Um, but it it certainly is something I so I don't think that the nine toddlers that we're talking about initial, that will be starting earliest. I don't really anticipate that it's going to change much for the rest of the the drop offs. They should be out of the way before the others, but it's certainly something that we can look at it. It it's, it's complicated. Like, I don't think we could exactly spit out a a a plan right now, but we could certainly look at tweaking things to just ease that as much as possible. To some extent, it's it's hard to really change things dramatically because it is, it is a school and it's it's hard to really space out classes too much. Um.
Right. Yeah, like if I, if I could, I think, I think Ms. Paul has said that the staggering helps with the congestion, but then her concern is there's more noise. So uh, you know, part of it almost seems practical.
I'm not sure what to do about the car doors and things. It's, it's tricky.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's certainly a way we could, we could notice the the parents to, uh, you know, please, please be mindful when you're getting out of your car that you don't slam the door because the may, you know, people, and people do try to be respectful and we could, you know, we can be proactive about that. And and there might be a way to add tack on another, another five minutes um, in in some of these stagger periods, but to Gretchen's point, this is a set schedule, so you can't really, if you're talking about moving it by a meaningful, you know, push it another half hour here or a half hour there. I don't think that's really something you could do and have the program meet the, meet the needs of the community as it's, as it's.
I think where where Mike was, Mike Robbins was getting to is he's saying if this, if it, if this change, if we determine it, you know, uh, the derogates from the neighborhood, then you know, that's where we're in a position where we can't, you know, we're not supposed to approve something that's going to be a negative impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So I think.
Changes the neighborhood, that's the, that's what I was trying to get feel from the neighbors and the abutters.
Yeah, the idea with number sixteen East Main Street is, I, we have the existing preschool that's been functioning like you said for the last.
Exactly. Right.
That wasn't really a plan that we dove into and to how to change the existing operation. We're focusing really on sixteen East Main Street and how do we keep that from impacting things in a more negative fashion? And that was, we're going to have all of those toddlers dropped off before the next drop off starts. And then at the end of the day, those toddlers will all be picked up before the next drop off picks up. So we, we can look at the bigger picture. But again, when we, when we put this application before you guys, it was, how do we keep this number sixteen East Main Street from being a negative?
Right, understood.
And pick them up early.
Ha- have you considered, by the way, I'm very familiar with this area, um, drive by all the time. I my kids' best friends live on there and overlook, so I'm over there all the time. Um, not typically at the traffic times, but um, have you thought about even additional staggering, like if your last name is A through M, this is your ten minute window. If your last name is N through Z, this is your ten minute window, um, to maybe just get more use out of the parking lot and less people on the street?
Um, I I I think Ron kind of nailed it a bit though, was when you're, when you're looking at, and there are multiple classrooms in the existing building. Um, when you start to add more than say like another five minutes on a staggering, uh.
Thirty-nine.
Now you start to impact the program itself and the timing of the program. There's one class and then after the classes.
No, you guess I was saying in this, the same, I meant the same timeframe, but just break it down, like first of all, as a parent, I know you may not get your kid out the door, right, on time. I can appreciate that. But it's, it's more like just, you know, educating the parents. It's a, it's a pain point, you know, for the neighbors and, you know, if we can, we can aim for this. It's, it's not like, you know, you can't let your kid in if you're you know, two minutes earlier, two minutes late, but you know, just as as an idea to be like, and and hey, now maybe you'll have a better option of getting a parking spot in the lot, you know, as opposed to parking down the street.
So.
Try anything.
Yeah.
That, um, and see, you know, where are we making a difference?
I I I think, I think we probably need to pull this back a little bit to, to the, to the, to the issue here.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it is a valid point to say to remember that, um, uh, you know, the school existed, so we're, we're not here to fix all current and future plant problems. I think it is a good point to say by adding, by making that house part of the the school with the nine students, are we making something substantially worse? And that, that's the only question. Uh, if and it, any, 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 you know, I understand people's speeding is not a good thing. We have no impact on that whatsoever. Can't do anything about it. Um, but is there something we can do to help the the neighbors have a condition here for those nine that where we think somehow those nine people in that uh in that additional room are going to make things a lot worse. I think that's the the question. Does, does that make it a lot worse than what it is now? Is that, would you agree, Mike?
Hundred percent. You're right on, you're right on focus. Is of nine additional students a substantial change to the neighborhood? Is this going to have a really deleterious effect on the abutters?
And and I would, I I obviously it's going to change every year, but I would assume some of those nine students may not even be from a different family or a different car. They may be siblings of existing students or, you know, multiple students from the same family.
And that's assuming a full enrollment.
Okay, right. So Craig, Craig wants to say something. Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, you know, in looking at it, I mean, you say there's currently thirty-nine spots in the existing program, right? Um, is that per session or like, and you have two sessions, so it's seventy-eight or is it?
You never have more than thirty-nine in the building.
But yeah, there are two sessions for this. So some of the classes are full day and a couple of the classes are half day. So there's two sessions for those classes. Overall, there's, I think if the school is maxed out with all the classes, the existing building has about ninety-four openings.
Okay, so ninety-four openings. Uh, yeah, another nine is less than ten percent barely. I think that's a reasonable assumption that that's not a significant difference. Um, what I would want to caution against is that, you know, sixteen Main Street starts having multiple sessions. You know, I think conditioning it to be used is great. Maybe a condition, you know, use a grant, granting the use is great for the special permit. But maybe the condition is that it is one class per day, nine kids.
Right. I I would agree. That's probably a reasonable uh condition, Craig. Um, and I, you know, again, I I I think it's true what Mike said that, you know, may feel like we're kicking the can down the road, but honestly, some of the issues with the plan are really with the uh, the the um, the planning board and and not with us. Um, so again, yeah, we need to, our, our role here is to do those additional nine students substantially, you know, derogate from the neighborhood.
Yeah, and you know, and that, that being said, this is, you know, in its existing configuration. If you guys come up with a better way to handle parking and have access to the back area and figure it out with your neighbors, not that you're trying to do that now. I totally understand that. Then, you know, come back and amend the special permit to ask for more capacity when you have parking and drop off and other things figured out.
Yep, fair enough.
That seems fair.
And and I also think it could be a benefit to the neighborhood. Like they said, I mean, daycare is getting more and more scarce and that both the, all around that neighborhood is very family oriented. Um, and South Burn in general, so it, you know, there are some benefits there.
Um, Ms. Paul, do you have anything else you wanted to say or ask?
No, thank you. I I I'm all, I'm all set. Thank you very much. This has been very informative and helpful.
All right. Well, thank you for uh for for participating. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, um, I have a, I have one other uh question. So it's just a a general comment. I certainly understand that maybe if you could narrow it into the nine, we're only looking at the nine in the addition. We have the right of way issue that's lurking and then we're going to lock the top door. You know, I I have to state that I have reservations. It's a creeping revisit to the zoning board um, in in two years. That's. And it may, no, it probably will be. I mean, it may be, but it may be not. You're just true, Greg. So, um, um, so that's just sort of where I'm at with the application and it would have um, um, been more, there's a, there's a clerical era that we're on the right of way, we're not on the right of way. So I I just think the plan and the staggering, it's getting to be a lot of conditions in my mind. And that's, that's how I feel about it. So.
Yeah, well, I, my, my, my view on the right of ways, I don't think we really have any to say there. That's really illegal. That's a real, real.
Right, yeah, no, no.
Do, I do think I.
But I do, we do, David, we we do in the respect that, no, it's absolutely can't touch the right of way. We we have no, no say in that. But there's, there's possibly a strong possibility that road will get blocked. Uh, and we're, we're, I'm thinking safety and security. I'm thinking about the children. I'm thinking about the nine children twice a day and I'm thinking about the other ninety-four that go out and go in and out with the, with the existing street issue and the doubling up. Um, so I mean, there, there's a bit, there's a bit on it. So I'm thinking.
But it, but I, I think my point is, I think we're well within our purview to say based on what they're presenting, we can say maximum of nine students, one time per day, two teachers. I, I think I'm get, I'm uncomfortable saying we have, you said something about the right away, just because I, I, I really think that's a property issue.
No, it's a property issue, but the, uh, safety and security rules, I'm not sure if we can, you know, that. I got safety issues.
It, it's not part of the petitioner's request.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're not making any statement that they're gonna use it. And I, I just think.
Yes, that, that's.
And they just wanna use nine, is it? No, they wanna put nine on a preschool, lock the door ups. I'm, 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 I understand fully. I fully understand it.
Okay.
All right. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion to close the public hearing has been made and seconded. All in favor respond with aye, against nay. Doris?
Nay.
The, the hearing open?
Do you have, you have further questions for the applicants?
Doris?
Doris?
No, I, I have no further questions. I, I don't have.
This is a motion. This is, we're just closing the public hearing here.
Oh, God, it's late for me. Okay, sure. Um, do I want to, yeah, we can close the public hearing. Thank you.
All right.
Please, let's close the public.
That's an aye. All right, Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Williams is aye, right? So now we'll, we have to, now the public meeting has been closed. I know, I, I, I guess the question, it, it feels like Doris, where, where are you? Just because, uh, I, I, I think I have a sense for. The four of the rest of us, maybe to a certain degree, but.
Yeah.
Uh, i- is your concern just what we have for conditions or approval in general?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm probably in the approval in, in general and, uh, it wouldn't matter what the condition was in fairness, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, the, the other members respectfully can certainly, uh, think and vote otherwise, uh.
Oh, certainly.
I mean, yeah, absolutely. So it's just, and from what I understand and what I've read, I, I'm not confident. Uh, I don't feel comfortable.
For my sake, you know, cause I'm looking, I have the bylaw in front of me. And, you know, it talks to shall not be a conflict with public health, safety, convenience, welfare. Do not be substantially detrimental or offensive to the neighborhood or destructive of property values therein.
Hmm, right.
The small aspect, given, given the small aspect of what the petitioners are moving forward. The issues with the property all exist. Do, does this addition? Is that a substantial detriment to all of those items? Like to pin down the abutters to see if they were kind of for or against this, and I think they had some questions and concerns, but. I felt like that those were overall more concerns with respect to. The existing application in use as opposed to the proposed addition. Though, for my opinion, I felt I was sad for Mike Robbins, I was satisfied that the proposal. Is not more substantially more detrimental. If it was a larger. You know, hey, we're gonna double our capacity here. That's a different kettle of fish. Nine?
Mike, uh, you don't have to, you don't have to. For my benefit?
Oh, totally. This is for all, this.
Right, okay.
That's my two cents.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I appreciate Mike saying that because I, I do think we, you know, sometimes we, we do go down the rabbit hole a little bit. I think we need to. You know, think about it. I, because I think it's important to separate from. To a certain extent, I have concerns with the school being here at all versus what are the concerns with adding the, you know, the nine? Um, and, and that's not to say that the concerns aren't legitimate, but, um, again, our, our role is. Does this change substantially derogate or, or, you know?
Yeah, so we spent some time with one of the abutters. And, um, I would wait, what I was hearing is, um, even though it's, they, they have every right for the pre-existing that. What I'm hearing is nine more, nine more people, ten times more, you know, you know, twice a day or maybe just the once a day. That's too many. That's how I heard. That's all I'm saying. I didn't hear it the other way. That's, that's it. That's so that, and then, um, you know, some other, and then the other butter. Uh, regardless is like, where's the parking? Where's the parking? And we don't have the parking. We don't have the parking plan. So that's substantial in my mind. So that, that's kind of where I'm at with it.
No worries.
It's, it's not about, no, I'm not worried even slightly. I'm not even kind of worried. I'm not even sort of worried, uh, far from worried. Uh, so, but I'm, sometimes when, in my mind, when, when people come. Uh, they're more reserved. So I'm, I'm trying to move them to, you know, not come out of this meeting as a neighbor and, and. Hear it the way I'm trying to explain it. So I'm trying to hear them and, and I, we didn't quite get it one way or the other. It's like, I, I like my neighbor. I like. But why are they here? So I'm, I'm back to why, why are they at the meeting? Um, because the, the, the end result is we're going to add nine, nine, you know, we're adding nine students.
Right.
Uh, we know there wasn't existing, but nine is more, um, so why, why come at all? If it's okay, that's, so nevermind. It's in my mind to see it as substantial, like to answer you, not to me necessarily, but maybe to those abutters.
Okay. Jamie?
Yep.
Where are you with this?
Uh, I think Mike nailed it. That's exactly what I was thinking. And in addition. Um, I absolutely appreciate the abutters that came forward. The right of way one, um, obviously supports the preschool. And, and felt like, you know, any issue she was concerned about was addressed in the meeting. Um, I appreciate the other butter too, who clearly has love for the preschool, um, but, you know. Also has concerns based on the noise and the traffic, but like I said, I, I am very, very familiar with this area and. It, it is pretty crowded just from the houses in general. There's a lot of houses on East Main. There's a lot of houses on Overlook. There's a lot of houses on there. And I think we only heard from two people. So I, my gut feeling is that this nine is not gonna be substantial. Um, my, my gut feeling is it's gonna end up being less than nine because probably give me at least one or two siblings. Um, there's no way to guarantee that, of course. Um, but I'm hoping it's not even as substantial as the nine cars twice a day. Um, and my gut would be to approve it based on the balance of, I, I think that. The town needs it and I don't think it's gonna be a substantial difference or, you know. Really going to drive down the property values, um, considering it's already existing with ninety kids a day potentially. So, that, that's my, that's how I'm feeling about it.
Okay. Craig, how about you?
Um. I'm, I'm good. I mean, I, I used to live in that neighborhood years ago and it's always been congested, you know, it's a narrow street, so. Not, you know, nothing's gonna change that. Um, and so we can't. We can't do anything about the fact that it's a narrow street. Um, and I don't think it's. You know, all, all development, every, every person who wants to put on a deck is gonna inconvenience somebody a little bit and, you know, I understand, um. You know, Ms. Paul, that this is more than maybe just a little bit, but I still think it's. In the, in the grand scheme of things, not, not signip, you know, not a, not a huge difference from what's there. Um, I do definitely wanna have the condition that it's one session per day, limited to nine students.
Yeah, yeah.
As part of this approval.
Yeah, I think, I think that's where I'm at, is I think there's, there's gotta be that condition because I, I would, I would much rather it go. Let's see what's, how that goes with that fixed number, uh, you know, and if. You know, they, they wanna come back in three years and say we've gotta expand. You've got three years of data. This is a lot of it to go with the nine, you know. Maybe you have to have a more substantial plan.
Agreed.
Okay. So, you taking a crack at it, Craig?
I can take a crack at it. Um. I move, let me pull up the, the actual thing here just to get to the right. Right verbiage. Scroll, scroll, scroll. Hold on. Uh. Okay. Um. I move that we approve the special permit for sixteen East Main Street. With the condition that, um, the preschool, private school, nursery, kindergarten use at sixteen East Main Street. Be limited to one session per day with no more than nine students. Um. Yeah, I think that's the, I think that's the motion.
A second.
All right, we have a motion to approve with a condition for. Uh, one session, session with a max of nine students. All those in favor respond with aye. Those against, nay. Doris?
Nay.
Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And Williams is aye, so that would be four to one. Four is what you need for approval. Um, so it's approved. Congratulations. Uh, thank you for your time. Um. You do, uh, there, there will be, uh, site plan review with, uh, with the planning board, so.
Yeah, I would. I would recommend to the, to the abutters that are, I saw Ms. Paul just hopped off, unfortunately, before we said this. You know, the, the rest of the conditions that could be imposed here are really through the planning board and that, that is your next opportunity to talk about. What you'd like to see and, and how you'd like the more substantial layout of the property to be. So I, I encourage you to, um, follow through and attend that and, and voice your concerns there if you still have them.
Agreed, all stated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Buck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so. On the agenda, we have approval of meeting minutes, um. April sixteenth, am I correct about that? Oh, twenty six, sorry. Twenty six, yeah. Oh boy, sorry, I'm, uh, my brain is now a little bit scrambled and, uh, let's remember what we did then.
Can I, can I, uh, share? It's, it's very late for me here. Do I need to stay on?
I, I think we can go ahead and do approval of meeting minutes without you, Doris.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's pretty late for me here, but I'm back in a few days, so, um, it's been.
Travel safe.
Yeah.
Hope I don't get delayed. I'm looking forward to getting home. Have a good night.
Safe travels, Doris.
I will, yeah. Long travels. Take care.
Long travels, yeah, I'm sure.
And I'm home, I'm home for a long time. Take care.
All right, thanks, bye.
All right, I didn't have any iss- I, I read the minutes. I didn't have any issues with them.
Okay.
Nope.
Well, make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
Second.
All right, motion to approve the minutes that's drafted has a second. All in favor respond with aye, against nay. All right, Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Williams, aye. So they're approved, uh, and the only thing we had. Oh, yeah, here, this is the scroll, scroll, scroll thing, Craig. Um, next meeting, June. Twenty first, twenty three. Do, what, do we have a, is there a specific day? I didn't know.
Um, yeah. Laura? Um, it's currently scheduled for June twenty first. Um, I didn't put that specific date on the agenda because we have changed it previously, so.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure that we had a specific date.
Do we have anything coming?
So we do, we have an application that was scheduled, um, it's a special permit for two sixty four Cordova Road. Um, I just received an email from the lawyer for the applicant just before this meeting asking if we could reschedule it to July. Um. However, the July meeting is outside of the sixty days or sixty five days that we need to. Hear the application. Um.
But it sounds as if we. Schedule it, open it, continue it, type of a thing.
It, it's, uh, sorry, could you, could you say that again? If, if we, if we move it to July, it's outside of what, sixty five days?
So there's a sixty five day deadline to, uh, hear an application, yeah.
Otherwise, it's constructively approved.
Yeah, you're right, okay. Like I, I, I told you, my brain scrambled at this point in the night, so. This is why meetings gonna go beyond, yeah.
I wonder if another week would make a difference? Um, would we still be up to sixty five?
Let me see, I mean, sixty five days is July fifth, I believe is day sixty five from when they filed. Um, so he, I think cannot do between June thirteenth to the twenty second. Um.
I mean, I, I could do June twenty eighth, I don't know.
Um. Yeah, well, y- you know, as much as it seems like it's ceremonial, Craig's got a good point, you could. Y- y- you know, the, the logical step is to have a meeting and then say, you know, motion to continue to the July meeting and. Um, and they're okay with it. Um, it, it seems like the cleanest thing, um. What, I, I'm sorry, what, what was the, the day, uh, that, that the twenty eighth?
The twenty first is the day our meeting is currently scheduled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So here, just to throw a wrinkle into it, I won't be available on the nineteenth of July.
Okay, yeah. I actually likely will not be either.
So it might make more sense to see if we can push it to the twenty eighth, cause that way we'll have people here. If that works for you and. Dave and, and Mike. It would work for me.
I think the tw- I think the twenty eighth is okay.
Mike?
All right, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I gave the.
Uh, sorry, I wasn't, I was, I was looking.
No, no, no. I, 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 I'm good to go on that for sure. We. So is that, is that our best, is that our best course of business then? Does it plan it for the twenty eighth?
I think so. That'd be my recommenda- that'd be my preference.
Does that work, Laura?
It, it works for me. It works with the legal deadlines that we have, so that's fine. Um. I did wanna ask if you guys wanted to keep it on Zoom or in person. This is an application that is likely to have a lot of neighborhood involvement. Um, there's a long, long legal history with this one, so.
Yeah, yeah, I spoke to, to Casey about this today and, uh, I said, I think I need to. Kind of see the whole history and string here to under, to understand it because I think this one's messy.
It is.
Um.
Oh.
Uh, what's, I mean, what, what's, what's, what's your opinion, uh, Craig? Are we better off with one that's messy like this in? In person or, or, or is it better to be on Zoom to let every, anybody who wants to chime in, chime in? Not that this is solely up to you. I'm just looking for your opinion.
Yeah, I, you know. I'm, I'm still a firm believer that having it online, um, provides greater access. I know, I mean. I guess not, not knowing the application yet in terms of what the, the applicant would want to present and. And things of that nature, I think, you know, having it presented on a screen. It, you know, everybody can see it the same.
Yeah.
Highlight things a little easier than if it's on an eagle facing us and not really the audience, you know, that sort of stuff, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a proponent of online.
Me too. I also think people are more comfortable speaking online, so someone who may not get up in a crowded room.
Yeah, they don't, they don't feel it when they're on Zoom.
Yeah, either video or they don't even have to be on video.
Right.
Mike, what's your opinion? Any, anything?
Well, seeing as that I'll likely be in Rhode Island, uh, but, um, I'd rather have it be.
Definitely a fan of Zoom.
Yeah. And who knows where, you know, Doris is gonna be.
Yeah, well.
She's gonna be around for a while, but, you know.
Yeah, I was just about to, I literally beat me to that. I'm like, is she gonna be like across, across the planet?
Yeah. Okay, why don't, why don't we plan on it being on, on Zoom, Laura? I still, I mean, my, my take on it thus far, and I, I could very easily prove it wrong. Is that I think a lot of it is, I, I, I literally have to like, I don't know, sit with legal or with Casey and, and say. What is, cause I think part of the problem is this long messy history of. The select board approved this, the planning board approved that. Oh, the ZBA didn't approve it. It's been before the ZBA. It, it's, it's like a lot of, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm. It, it's, it's like a lot of, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not using the right, um, uh, words here, but it's like the. The process wasn't quite followed the whole way, or, so it's, it seems like it's more a procedural issue. It was, so it would be important to try to get all the facts as clear as possible in advance.
So that was kind of one of my questions is if you want me to ask town council to be involved with this application. Whether you want him to attend the meeting or provide a legal opinion, just so we can kind of get all of our ducks in a row for that.
Is, is there a legal question?
Uh, I mean, from what David said, it sounds like the legal question is which of these previous approvals, you know, planning board. Select board are.
Outstanding.
Well, like, you know, should be, you know, regarded as, you know, true.
Right.
Like, if, if the select board didn't have the power to grant the approval, then no, they, that shouldn't be an approval that we have to consider as already granted. You know, it's more the history that I think the, that town council would be helpful with. Which ones are right, which ones are, which ones are valid, which ones aren't? Not, again, not having seen the, seen what the application is or, or looked at the property in any way.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's confusing that way.
And I, and I think there's no reason why I couldn't myself meet with Jay to, to say what exactly is, how do you see it? But maybe we do then want to have, invite him after that, but I, you know, where I'm coming from, I would like to be in that meeting. Understanding it as best I, as I possibly can, and that seems like that kind of legwork is going to be required.
Yeah.
Of me.
Do you think it's something that we need to schedule a special meeting? So that the whole board can be present and he can, you know, kind of like he did with the forty B regulations or?
I, I think. I mean, I think, my sense is that, you know, David, you talked to him first. And if, if it gets to a point where you think we should be hearing this firsthand. Or, you know, something that him writing a letter explaining it to us wouldn't be sufficient, then, you know, get back to us and we'll, we'll schedule a. You know.
Okay.
A, a closed session, you know, because we're not supposed to talk about a particular. Patient amongst ourselves without it being public, and we'd have to have it be a, an executive session.
Okay.
With the attorney, and with the attorney, that's an acceptable reason for executive session.
Okay, so, so maybe I should just try to schedule some, something with him as soon as possible.
Yep.
And let's plan on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Now, what about July? Do we, on the twenty-eighth, consider skipping that or?
Um. There's likely an application for July, so. I just met with a woman, um, yesterday, who's planning to file in time for the July hearing, so. I don't know if you want to figure out if you want to do the twelfth or the twenty-sixth.
I'm, I'm gone most of July, so. And I think, I think we might be better off saying that July just isn't happening because we won't have a quorum.
Twelfth either, so.
Okay.
We can all touch base with that on June, too.
I, I can't do the twenty-sixth or the twelfth either. Just looked at my calendar.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to have a quorum problem, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, then I guess I'll work with that one applicant to make sure that we have a meeting that falls within the sixty-five days. Uh. Okay.
Yeah, August would be the sixteenth is the third Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that it?
I think so. Jamie, you want to, you want to play?
That's it, yeah.
Can I, super quick, sorry, two other things I just wanted to put out there for you guys to think about. Um, for June, I, right, June thirtieth is, Jamie, I think that's the last day of your term.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So just throwing that out there, and then, um, you guys need to vote on chair as well, so just putting that out in the ether.
I forget, I think I have one year term, right?
Yes.
So I think I forget what happens, like the select board.
I, I.
Forgot what happened.
Oh, well, yeah, Mike, actually next year. Sorry, Mike, I thought you were this year. It's next year.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, uh, Ja- Ja- Jamie, considering we have one alternate, I would say the select board better nominate you again. So, um, but, and, and we, actually, we had talked about this before, Laura, like, we really, we, we. We, we vote on the chair, you know, after the terms are, are refreshed, so I think that's perfectly legal to do.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can do that within. At the next meeting.
Whatever the next meeting is.
After, after June thirtieth, yeah.
Right.
So do I have to do anything with the select board or?
No.
I remember last year I basically got an email and then I think I had to like get sworn in again.
Okay.
Or something. It was, I don't remember. It was very easy.
Yeah.
You might be a winner.
Um, was there, was there anything else that you had, Laura, or was it those?
Nope, that was it.
All right, so Mike standing in as Paul.
I thought it was Jamie, I thought it was.
Yeah, I thought it was me. It's so rare that I get to actually like do anything.
That's the most important part of the meeting.
Uh, I guess I make a motion to end the meeting.
Second.
All right, motion to adjourn and second.
Thank you.
All in favor, respond with aye. Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Thank you, everybody. Good work.
All right.
Work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we'll see you around.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.
Hi, everybody.